I'm sure that people will be walking in as we begin tonight, but we want to keep this program on target for the time. Time goes really fast. So I'd like to welcome you all for coming. I'm Florence Haddene and I'm a member of the Park Rapids League of Women Voters. And I've been a member since it started because I was one of the persons who helped to get it started back in about 2000. The League of Women Voters of Park Rapids, Minnesota and the U.S. are political organizations that don't endorse candidates or political parties, but encourage informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy through education and advocacy. Membership is open to anyone over the age of 16. Yes, even men, okay? You may read more about the League of Women Voters in the program that you receive tonight on the back page. Thank you for attending tonight's event. We also thank our participants for taking time to be with us. Thanks also to the Park Rapids Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce Volunteers and to our own volunteers. Our timer tonight is Carter Haddene, and he will indicate when the speakers have 15 seconds left and when to stop. And it will be up to them to honor those so that we can keep on track with this event tonight. We also would like very much to thank the Akeley Regional Community Center for providing the meeting space. First, some housekeeping. There are refreshments. You could gather it now while I'm talking, or go and get some now while I'm talking, or you can enjoy them after the form. And we expect that our gentlemen will be able to stay and talk with you as well because we will not get to all of the questions. We know that. Donations are most welcome at the refreshment table. The restroom is located right here, I believe. Okay. I'm sure there are some others in some other part of the building, but this is where we're at tonight. Please turn off your cell phones. Video and audio recording is in progress. The candidates received the ground rules for this event and have agreed to them. And as an audience, as audience members, we ask you to remain as quiet as possible so that everyone can hear the candidates' responses. Also, please hold any applause until the form has ended so candidates can use all of their time to answer your questions. The League will determine which questions will be asked and will attempt in good faith to cover areas of interest expressed by the audience. Questions will be screened and similar questions will be consolidated so as many topics as possible can be covered. No questions of a personal nature or that are inappropriately hostile or unclear in intent will be asked. It is our goal to have a civil discussion of the issues and give you information you need to know when you vote on November 8th. You may write out a question for the candidates anytime during the event. Please raise your hand to have your question picked up by a volunteer. Thanks again for taking time to be with us. Our participants tonight include Dan Stacy and challenger Mark Peterson. Charlene Christensen, who is running unopposed in Commissioner District 2, is unable to attend, but sends her apologies. She noted, "I am disappointed to let you know that I will not be able to attend the event tonight. I am alternate commissioner for the Planning Commission Board of Adjustments, which meets this evening. And since Cal is unable to attend that meeting, I need to be there. I hope that there is a great turnout and I thank you for hosting all the area events to inform voters. It is much appreciated." Char. We will need to wrap up questioning of the candidates no later than 6:55 to allow each candidate a two-minute wrap-up time. And we will attempt to end promptly at 7 o'clock. We will begin tonight with Dan, and he'll introduce himself. He has two minutes to tell us why we should get to know him better. And then it will come to Mark, and Mark will also have two minutes. And following that, we'll start the questioning, and Mark, you'll be the first to answer a question. Okay.
Do I need this?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, Carter. My name is, first of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to extend a big thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on tonight's form. My name is Dan Stacy, and I have been honored to be your commissioner for District 4 in Hoover County for the past four years. I'd like to introduce my wife, which you go. She looks here somewhere. Oh, she just went out. She's on call. Tammy Stacy. We've been married for 22 years and have two grown children. Jeff Stacy, a deputy with the Hoover County Sheriff's Department, there my wife. And my son Daniel was employed with Akeley Auto as a mechanic. We have an exceptional daughter-in-law, Maggie Stacy, and four adorable children, grandchildren, and that would be Michael, Maray, McKenna, and Maya. They all attend U.S. Public School. My wife and I have been a resident of 10th Rowing since 1999. I'd like to introduce two other persons if I may. One is my father-in-law, Gene Monsgough, sitting next to my wife. Mr. Monsgough has resided with us since 2015. He is an retired veteran from the United States Air Force in 1973. Rita, his significant other, is receiving care in law in Oklahoma. Also, I'd like to introduce Wayne Tennessee, a.k.a. Grand Wayne, as my children say. Also a veteran with the Army. I have been very blessed with the opportunity to be employed in the following occupations after serving as a police officer in Bonn August since 1997 after a near fatal motor vehicle crash. These occupations included state probation agent, Walker, a property manager with D.W. Jones Management, a mental health practitioner with North Holmes Children and Family Services, and presently as a transportation supervisor, bus driver with Nevis School District 308 for the past seven years. I'm responsible for keeping our children safe. I'm also a member of the White Oak Isle Chapel in Chamberlain and serve as one of the Eagles. I received a bachelor's of science degree at B.S.U. in criminal justice and psychology. I serve in the Valiant Committee.
Thank you, Dan. We really appreciate it. That time goes quickly, doesn't it? Yes, okay. Mark?
Hi, this is Mark. My name is Mark Peterson. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters also for putting on these events. I know they're a lot of work. I've also, from seeing some of the township meetings and city hall meetings, or city council meetings, I want to thank those folks for the effort they put into helping us to run this county and the townships. I was born and raised in Park Rapids, spent my early adulthood life here. My mother and father were graduates from Park Rapids High School, as was I was. Spent many years with my wife, now for 20 years. One of the best things that ever happened to me. Raised two great kids who are now out on their own, working with great boyfriends and girlfriends and starting their lives. We're proud of them. Part of why I'm here is I spent a great deal of my life enjoying the area and I took it for granted. And as I came back there here about five, six years ago, I realized that you just can't keep taking things for granted. You have to get involved. It comes from the heart, my pursuing this Hoover County Commissioner, 4th District race. It's, I want to continue to enjoy the forest, the clean lakes. I want to be active and trying to make sure we keep them that way. I've also had a deer hunting camp up here for over 40 years, so I'm no stranger to enjoying the woods and enjoying Hoover County lease. We would like to see that, a little bit about my employment up here. I moved up here six and a half years ago and took over the job at the Nevis Municipal Liquor Store. From there, I was pretty active in helping that get back on its feet and being more active in the community. From there, I got into wine spirit sales, kind of a natural segue. And basically, what I'm looking for is helping to grow a solid tax base with thriving businesses. And often, people have good reason to come up here and retire. Many of us are baby boomers and older, and we need the services and the help to make this a better county to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll proceed with the questions. And you will be answering the question first, Mark, okay? And then Dan will take the next one, or will follow you with his answer. And then you'll, Dan, proceed with the next question. So we'll go back and forth in that way, okay? What qualifies you to be a Hoover County Commissioner? Give examples from your employment history that would lend itself to the position.
Well, as I mentioned, I was a manager of the Nevis Municipal Liquor Store. But part of that, I spent many, many years in the restaurant and hospitality industry. In that industry, it's not just all fun and food and beverage. You do have budgets. You do have employees to take care of, keep everything under control, keep it profitable for the company. Over the last few years, I've also been in sales, and sales is one of those areas where you need to be on your game all the time, be innovative, be positive, looking for new answers, better ways to do things. And I believe that that's a skill set that I will bring to the commissioner position, one that'll bring my passion, my extra years of experience. As we get a little older, we learn a lot more from life. And hopefully, that'll be the right ticket to make Hoover County the place that it should always be, is the best place to live in. Thank you.
Dan, what issues do you see that should be at the forefront of the county's agenda for the future? Oops, did I move off?
Yes.
You did. I'm sorry. What qualities, what qualifies you to be Hoover County Commissioner? Give examples from your employment history that would lend itself to the position, that lends itself to the position.
All right. Okay. I am an experienced county commissioner for District 4.
Microphone, please.
Sorry. I have served as your county commissioner for District 4 in the past four years. I had, in my two-minute introduction, I indicated a police officer probation agent, property manager, mental health practitioner, transportation supervisor. All of these jobs are service-orientated and manage people, time, and revenue. A.I.S. is another important part that we have been involved in as Hoover County Commissioners, and we have taken on the program within the county.
Okay, great. We'll go on with the next question. Thank you very much. Now you get to answer the question that I was asking you for. What issues do you see that should be at the forefront of the county's agenda into the future? Please give specific examples of what you would want to do.
Well, the first thing is seeing that your tax dollars are spent wisely, and that is one of my top priorities, watching, keeping your watchful eye on the annual budget. Another concern is also the jobs, economic development, and the cost of living. Bringing manufacturing jobs to the area would boost the economic development. We're in the process of working with the Chamber of Congress in Park Rapids and Land Records Department to do a mapping system that promotes the recreational activities in areas that we have within the county to emphasize tourism, put more money into the county. Also, another thing that I believe is very important, of course, is A.I.S. And if we don't keep our clean waters and waterways, we would be in a great financial hardship as we have over 300-plus lakes and rivers in our county.
Mark?
Thank you. Basically, what I'd be seeking is securing state funding and partnerships for our waterways so we can get a better battle with the A.I.S. problem. From talking to people in different area lakes over the last few months and the last few years, I believe we're on the right track, but I do think we have to be a little more aggressive with it. Some of the feedback I get is that not enough is being done, not enough accountability, not enough education, not enough truly checking votes and making sure that they're keeping it clean. I agree with Dan that if that, if those problems arise in our lakes around here, the property values may go down, taxes will go up, and I don't want that to happen. I don't want taxes to go up for anything. I also believe starting a partnership to help us with the growing drug abuse and the problems that come from that for both social, law enforcement, and the county's office to take care of those issues. And I've worked very hard to make sure that that comes to the forefront for our county.
Then you'll take the next question also, okay? Would you be in favor of passing the ordinance for county zoning? Why or why not?
The ordinance, as far as I know, it's not a good, strong point for me, I'll be honest. But as I've seen so far, I would be in favor of it. One of the things I hope that will be done is more discussion on property rights and property values.
Dan, can you address that question? If you want me to repeat it, I'd be glad to.
Would you repeat that again, please?
Would you be in favor of passing the ordinance for county-wide zoning, county zoning plan? Why or why not?
We have a very extensive county ordinance zoning that Eric Lichtenworth is in charge of. Many things come up, and I believe that you need to change with the times. For instance, we had a situation where they had temporary housing, and that came up amongst the county board. It's all five of us believe that temporary housing would not be an asset and more problematic to the county. So I need, and all of us need, the county commissioners flexible in addressing those issues. And that's why we have work sessions that we can debate them and get our answers, questions answered by the different managers that represent the different areas of expertise.
Okay, then you would take the next question, right? As a Hoover County Commissioner, how would you avoid conflict of interest situations?
I think as a public servant, you have to remember that conflict is always there. Being a public servant requires the ability to look beyond your personal point of view and assimilate new ideas. Consensus billing and decision-making is a process that depends on everyone having the opportunity to share their thoughts. I am a good listener, and I'm willing to integrate an open dialogue, skills that are important in decision-making and conflict resolution. Preconceived ideas often get in the way of good decisions. I favor a learning process that involves gathering information. The first step is to gather the facts, compile the data on both sides of the issue. This may include speaking, having public opinions, contacting your managers. Then I would bring it, this controversial issue, to a work session where it can be debated and open dialogue with the other fellow commissioners.
Okay, Mark?
Could you repeat that again, please?
As a Hoover County Commissioner, how would you avoid conflict of interest situations?
Basically, when I look at those kind of issues, it's you listen first, ask questions, do some research, make sure you're not taking sides or showing any bias. I like to make sure I have researched, make sure I have the right facts so that we can see about a conflict of interest. If I have a conflict of interest that is pointed out to me, it certainly would be something I would take to the county attorney's office to make sure that if it is, that I would not be involved in it. It's important that you are clear, concise, open, direct, and honest. And so if those things can't be met, then you would have to take yourself out of any kind of a conflict of interest.
And then you would start with the next question, okay, Mark? What do you see as the major threats to the aquifers in Hoover County?
The major threat of the aquifers? Well, I think they're doing studies and stuff on, as far as irrigation, if that's what we're talking about. I know the agriculture is very important for our community in our area. Helps the tax base, helps with employment. It's not an area that I would want to say is good or bad, but I do think we need more studies on it to make sure that the aquifer isn't being taken away from us, which would destroy the rest of our environment, our habitat, our forests, and our lakes. Make sure that our streams stay cool for the trout that are in there and so that people can still enjoy that part of our county. As far as pesticides or herbicides, I'm hoping that we have more studies and more groups that look at what is happening and how much of it is getting into the aquifer. So I would be very front-forward and make sure that we had groups that would work on that with us.
Dan, what do you see as the major threats to the aquifers in Hoover County?
We have a few threats in the area, of course, and we have manufacturing. But in the same token with that, that particular manufacturing, or excuse me, company has many checks and balances to be good stewards of the land. We have well monitoring in the different areas throughout the county. We also have cities that have worked with the DNR or are currently working with DNR, such as Laporte with the Wellhead Protection Plan, rely on the information from the Soil and Water Division. And you know, in Hoover County, we have 266-plus thousand acres of land that is public land, and that is a good start. We, by having that, minimize the pollution that's within our waterways.
The next question you'll be taking is, "There were questions about the Fox-Lawson study. Please explain what this study was and if or when the information will be released to the public."
Okay, the Fox-Lawson plan that we had initiated was prompted by the county employees making sure that they were compensated same similar jobs, duties, and responsibilities. We started with the Fox-Lawson program. We invested money in that. Took a lot of valuable information from that. But after further consideration, the five commissioners indicated that we would not use all of that information. We have run to a new grid system that takes the surrounding counties of Beltrami, Becker County, Cass County, Medina County, and Clearwater and grid them into this 10-step phase. Initially, we have rolled out this system and a program to the union negotiation teams that we're currently working with now.
Mark?
If we want to understand about the Fox-Lawson study, it costs us over $50,000. I could be wrong about that. I know it's a wage and benefit study. It's been around for a couple of years. And I guess I would encourage that the report be made public so that everyone knows what's in there, whether it's something important to the employees and to the workers of Hoover County. So I would just ask and encourage the Hoover County Commissioners to consider releasing that study so that everyone has a chance to take a peek at it. Thank you.
Okay, then you'll take the next question also, Mark. What do you feel are the critical needs for protecting the economic and recreational value of lakes and rivers in Hoover County?
It all goes back to A.I.S. and the encroachment of species that are going to wreck the waterways and possibly cause harm. We have friends on Crosslake that last year or two discovered zebra mussels, and of course, they're growing and becoming a problem. So it goes back to making sure that we have the resources, the talent, and the people in the field to inspect and educate and try to keep it out of our lakes and our waterways. One of the comments I got from some of the people I've talked to this fall is that there's no real checks and balance on it. Someone comes and goes from a public access, you really don't know where they've been. I guess I would encourage doing a little bit more of a statewide thing with the A.I.S. Task Force to get a tour. Maybe there's stickers or something on those that have been taken out of lakes that aren't fenced so that the next public access can see what's going on with that boat.
Do you want to ask again, or do you want to just follow?
No, I'm good. First of all, I take the comment prior to, I believe, five minutes earlier about A.I.S. and the good work that the volunteers and people have done in this community to provide a quality product. You know, this is a volunteer project. It started out 10 years ago. The people worked very diligently with that. It got over and transferred over to the Soil and Water Division. Hoover County Commissioners have invested $30-plus thousand each year. The state of Minnesota invested $250,000. We've got an extensive program. We now have taken over the program as far as in Hoover County. And Bill Don Carlos is our chief inspector for the A.I.S. And maybe afterwards, I have a little summary here of the Hoover County A.I.S. mid-season data summary that if you'd like to look at that, Mark, that would be great and provide a lot of great information and education.
And the next question then is for you, Dan, to start with, okay? What should trigger an inspection of a private septic system here in Hoover County? And a follow-up question, what is your understanding of the Minnesota State Septic System Regulations?
Well, the triggering point is twofold. Number one, if you pull permit. You pull permit, and you have any updates on there, they're going to come out, any additions are going to come out. And first of all, look in the records, see if, when and when, when and where your septic was inspected. The county will come out on that. As far as the second part of your question, would you please repeat that?
What is your understanding of the Minnesota State Septic System Regulations?
It's a governance, on a state level, it's a governing process of checks and balances that we have incorporated within Hoover County in our ordinances. Also, maybe go back to the first part of that, you know, the triggering point being the application for permit. It's also the neighbors in your, in your community. They'll see a building, make a phone call, and honestly, to Hoover County, and we'll look into it.
Okay.
Repeat that one again. It's a little tricky to grab.
Okay, yeah, it is, it is. What should trigger an inspection of a private septic system here in Hoover County? The follow-up to that is what is your understanding of the Minnesota State Septic System Regulations?
What would trigger it would be, I guess, if there's obvious, the neighbors see an obvious problem with the property. If they do call it in, it would be good to know because we want to keep the lakes clean. Possibly another way to make sure that we are having up-to-date septic systems is maybe upon the sale of properties that there's an inspection done, generally a sale, at least the last couple of houses we've done. But maybe that needs to have a little more teeth in to make sure they're up to code, and then the homeowners are aware of what needs to be done to make them up to code. As far as the last part, I'm not sure. It seems like in the state of Minnesota, from my experience, that every county seems to have a little different zoning laws and septic systems and what's allowable. So I guess I'd have to more educate in that last part of your question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then you get the next question as well. What are your priorities for funding county programs in the face of rising costs?
Well, generally, the ideas I have for helping the citizens of Hoover County in the 4th District, if they're new programs, I know there are grants. There's different aid out there to get them started. I want to try to take advantage of those with getting task force together to pull together all the talent and all the brains and all the smarts that I don't have to put together programs and get grants and get things started so that we can help to improve the quality of life and combat A.I.S. and combat rampant drug abuse and the crime that comes with that. So that's where I would do it, is with grants and inform the public and inform the helpers with the task force.
Dan, what are your priorities for funding county programs in the face of rising costs?
Well, funding existing programs is always a concern. Growth will result Growth will result in an increase in expenditures for everything from law enforcement, social services, to the public road systems. We have, just looking back at some statistical data for just 2017, you know, our revenues we take in over $40 million. Our expenditures are, to be exact, 40,405,613, and the expenditure is 40,276. So the revenues taken in are anything from social services in that department. They do a fine job. They just received a nice award this past week for the fine work that they have performed. But we, we receive a lot of funding, a lot of grants, Snow Bill, everything from the COBs grant to numerous different issues in law enforcement. We do receive a lot of funding, and we're very proactive at receiving any matching funds such as the solid waste transfer station at Park Rapids.
Then the next question, I will be from you starting also, Dan. More frequently, owners of private cabins are using websites such as VRVO, Vacation Rental by Owner, to rent their cabins. What is your position on any rules or regulations that are needed at the county level for this developing part of our economy?
Well, first of all, we have addressed that about a month, month and a half ago at one of our board meetings. It's a, it's a concern. It actually takes away from the other vendors that have resorts in our area, takes their proceeds and funding away. And we've looked into that. Possibly what we have mentioned and kicked around a little bit was the fact of increasing that tax for that property, knowing that it is, knowing that it is a business, and it should be treated like a business.
Okay. Mark, do you?
Well, personally, I respect private property rights. So it would be something more of a study on and see how much this is going on, how many weeks are being truly sold or rented out, and look at that and decide if there needs to be some more regulation. I don't believe in taxes, more taxes, but perhaps more regulation on maybe a limit to how often they can rent out their property without certain licensure. We do have wells, septic systems we have to worry about, and the more use they get without any care, the more problems we may have for our environment. But the first thing is I do respect people and what their property is, and one person's idea of too much is another person's idea of not enough as far as using their property the way they want to do it.
Okay, and you'll be doing this, this question now. Given that research shows that forested land protects the environment, what are your ideas to protect our forested lands?
Well, my ideas to protect the forested land goes back to my childhood here and enjoying the woods I took for granted. There's many people I've known and friends I went to school with here that are still logging and have a logging company. So I think we, we have a pretty good balance in Hubbard County between using the resources and replacing them. I don't see that there's an issue right now of forestland not being protected. I'm more inclined to say, let's make sure we have it, the more forestland we have that's available to the public, the better it is for, for our economy with people coming up and hunting this time of year. MEA weekend was just this last weekend, I was up at my hunting shack, and there was a ton of traffic, you know, with families and kids and everyone else having a good time. I'm grouse hunting, duck hunting, not sure what they're all hunting, but I do want to see the forestland be protected but available for the public.
Dan, how would you respond to that?
Well, like you had mentioned, we have 266,000-plus acres in Hubbard County of public land that's used for the public. You know, I continue to support the use of dollars generated by the sale of timbers on tax forfeit land. That money goes into our Parks and Recs Department to encourage new family-friendly recreational activity in the area, which also promotes the economic development when they stop like groceries or whatnot. It's definitely an asset. We have a great department. We have a great department. Chip has done a fine job and his staff are protecting the environment. We have a 10-year plan, exactly what we're going to harvest, how we're going to do it, some little things that come into play. We just had a blowdown in the northern part of the county in Guthrie, and we get in there the best we can and get loggers to redeem those timbers so that we don't have any forest fires tonight. Looking at my grandson, Mike, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will be yours, and then we'll go to, to Mark. The commissioners, we may have spoken a bit to this, but this is a really straightforward question from a member of our audience. The commissioners raised their salaries in 2014, but at that time, others were not getting raises. How can this be justified, and how would you handle issues of pay raises?
Okay, that's not a true statement. Number one, when I took the job in 2012, the salary was 15,500, with 4,500 of that after every four years to be used for either insurance or payback. That was our salary at that time. What we did back in 2014, instead of taking that dollar amount to 4,500, waiting till the end of your term, we had included that in our wages. It was our wages all along. County employees received cost of living raises, they received step increases, longevity pay, so that's an incorrect statement.
Mark, do you want to speak to that? Do you need to ask?
No, it sounds to me like they still got a raise, and other people don't feel they did. When you have a working environment where everyone is trying to be on the same page, you want to make sure that it's open, direct, clear, honest, and if that's the perception, if what he says, how he perceives it, I respect him for that. But if the perception for a lot of the people who work for the county was that they got theirs and they didn't get theirs, and it's kind of a two-way street where we have to make sure we take care of everyone. It may be very justified what the county commissioners got, but I'd like to make sure that everyone feels like they know what's going on and that it's open and honest.
If you want to retort for 30 seconds, you're welcome to do that, Dan.
I would certainly like to do that.
30 seconds.
You know, you can contact Deb, come up to the coordinator's office, see what the jobs, duties, and responsibilities for a commissioner has been in the past years. It'll clearly state what the annual salary is and the 4,500 per term is. That is a wage. We just took that 4,500 and were very transparent and put it in with the wages, and the county employees didn't receive a cost of living, longevity, and pay raises per union negotiations.
We'll go back to you, Mark, to take the next fresh question, okay? What measures would you support to improve public health, including mental health, in our county?
Much of the, say it again, please.
Okay. What measures would you support to improve public health, including mental health, in our county?
There again, working with both the social services and the county attorney's office and the sheriff's department, make sure that we're taking care of much of the public health and mental health is hampered by kind of rampant drug abuse and use. Create a task force that we can tackle this issue, get people to off the drugs, into healthy environments, taking care of their children, getting back to work, and hopefully that task force would bring up more suggestions, ideas that would bring better healthcare and whatever. I'm also concerned about keeping our baby boomers happy and healthy in their homes so that they have a lifetime of enjoying up here like I do.
What measures would you support to improve public health, including mental health, in our county?
Okay, we're doing that right now. We contract out with St. Joseph's Hospital. They take care of the public health entity of social services. It's worked very well for, I can say at least in the last four years. We have a very proactive department to make sure that immunizations and health records and all are kept up, state and local laws, federal laws. Also, in the mental health, we have numerous vendors in the last four years that have came into our community to provide services for the individuals. I believe at this time, we're very proactive in it, very, I mean, myself, not including myself, but the vendors. You know, you've got Stellar, you have North Homes, you have tons of vendors that are, that are here to provide services for the community.
Very good. Next question. Given that Hubbard County is one of the poorer counties in Minnesota, and we are seeing many help-wanted signs up all summer, what can you do to help us recruit, retain, and develop our workforce locally?
Okay, this summer and throughout the past years, I've made face-to-face contacts with the constituents in District Four. One of their biggest concerns is the business sector. The community is also troubled by the lack of reliable advocates to fill entry-level positions and seasonal positions. You know, a second part of that, and Mark had initiated that earlier, was the fact that some citizens are frustrated that individuals cannot pass a drug test and may be unemployable because of that. You know, we're continually working, social services doing a great job. We have two new hires to work with the community members seven days a week on mental health issues.
Now, here's, should I read each question? Okay. Given that Hubbard County is one of the poorer counties in Minnesota, and we are seeing many help-wanted signs up all summer, what can you do to help us recruit, retain, and develop our workforce locally?
Well, first off, with my current job, I drive around a lot, and so I see a lot of my accounts, and it's an issue throughout the state. It's shocking to me because I have part-time jobs and obviously I'm running for another job here. So I don't understand the work ethic anymore. It's something that's near epidemic proportions, not just for Hubbard County but for the region. As far as finding different ways to get people, perhaps there are ways we can get people that, once they have cleared up their drug use and get on the straight and narrow, that we can give them a second chance at employment and support from the county with programs that would allow them to do that, to grow in it, to gain pride in that, and gain pride in being a part of the community again, and be more productive. Giving people a second chance is always the best thing to do.
Thank you. All right, and then you get to start with the next question. Describe your philosophy on logging of public lands.
Well, I think I briefly touched it, but many loggers up here I've known for years. I believe most of them cherish the land, it's their resource to make money on. We, as a county, get the proceeds of that from selling the timber rights to them. I think it's a program that's still working. Dan had mentioned that they've been doing a good job, and I think they have done a good job. My hunting cabin, or lodge, as I like to call it, it's really a shack, is surrounded by county land that is severely cut and cleared, and I don't see a problem with it. I do see a, one problem I see once in a while is sometimes the cutting leases, I think, run a little too close to private land. If I had a lake home or a nice property, I know the public land's across the road, but all of a sudden it's clear-cut. Maybe we can give them a little break and a little bit better buffers on on some of that kind of.
Dan?
Okay, again, 266,000 acres, and with that, we have a great forest management team that has a long-range plan on when to cut, what to cut, forest regeneration. And the other thing to think about that, too, the loggers, they support the loggers 100%, the money's a portion of the money, go back to the individual school district, Nevis, Walker, Park Rapids, and that, that money, as you know, is used to fund their general fund, and hopefully that decreases your taxpayer amount for that school district.
Thank you. And then you get to start with the next question. How would you describe the status of roads and bridges, et cetera, in Hubbard County? And then following up, if you see that there is an issue, how would you see us funding these projects?
Okay, as far as the status, we have great engineers, David Olinowski and Judge Ordine, and their team have worked diligently to keep up on the roads, just in our district, Mark and I, you know, kind of Road 25 has been repaved. City of La Porte, new roads, paved roads, sidewalks. You know, we use, we passed an ordinance last year, I believe, halfway through last year, of a half-cent tax, and that's to be used to upgrade and keep our roads and bridges. Like I say, we have a five-year plan for that. We're proactive in keeping up our roads, so when you visit their surrounding areas, as I have, you can definitely see a major difference in Hubbard County. It's very proactive. They're, they're doing a fine job.
Mark, how would you describe the status of roads and bridges, et cetera, in Hubbard County? And if you see that there is an issue, how would you fund these projects?
I agree with Dan. I think they're doing a great job. I met with the engineer for Hubbard County and explained the five-year program, and also being very proactive in moving up if there's some funds available, that he can justify to take advantage of the better asphalt rates. I think some of the roads are 104, on the Road 25, I remember, were done beautifully, quickly, professionally, and at a good cost savings. So I applaud the engineer for being aggressive and getting those bids out and changing things around and make it work on these bigger projects. I do hear people brumble about the extra tax that was added on, but as long as that funds is not being rated for other things, I'm still for that extra little tax because it has shown to save us money or save us from the taxes and apply it strictly for roads and bridges.
Thank you.
Okay, that 5% or, excuse me, 25% tax, that's for, that's for everyone that enters the county. You enter the county, you buy gas, groceries, whatever or not, everyone, that's a shared cost, not just to the individual taxpayers of Hubbard County. Everyone shares in that cost.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that you would be the next to start with the question, correct, Mark?
Yes.
Yes, okay. How, as the demographics of Hubbard County change, how would you, how do you see that affecting our county services? As the demographics change?
Okay. You're talking about getting older, huh? Well, I'm in that great group called the Baby Boomers. Some are already retiring, some are looking forward to retiring. Many of my friends are looking to move up in the area, looking to buy their properties or already have. My experience with, especially with my wife, through the years, she's worked with the older populations in different careers, and currently works at Hubbard County doing the same thing. And one of the concerns they have is, when you ask people to move up here, when you want them to move up here, and they want to live up here, how do we keep them in their homes? How do we help them age in their homes or age in place, or help them move into something that's appropriate for them when they're not able to do that? So it'd be one of those ideas, I'd like to have a task force to work on getting the social workers and the different groups and the different state funding to look at ways to offer better services for the seniors, and that would also be another opportunity for employment and help our, you know, hopefully bring more people and have more people working here that we need to have work.
Thank you. Dan, can you address the question? As the demographics of Hubbard County change, how do you see that affecting our county services?
Well, as, as a population, demographics change, whether it be in older age, younger age, whatever it may be, it is changing. It's changing all over the It's changing all over the place nationally, you know. People are living longer, which is great, you know, as far as, as far as the people moving into the area. If you look in the northern part of District Four, we have a lot of people that are coming into our community that want to reside here because of the assets that we have as a county and the services that we provide, whether it be social services, law enforcement, roads and bridges. The other aspect of that is, as the demographics change, you look at the nursing home, we put in fourteen point one million dollars to upgrade that, to make it a viable nursing home with all the entities that they may need. Others like myself, we take in, we're caregivers for family members for that aging population, and it takes all of us to make a difference, everybody working together.
And then, Dan, next question. How do you communicate with the general public about issues coming before the board?
Real simply, number one, listen to what they have to say. Listen, very important first step. Listen to what they have to say, you know, whatever the conversation may be, become informed about whatever the issue that they may have, and that would be contacting your managers, say with social services, you contact the director of social services. What's the issue on this particular subject? How can we remedy it? Working together, being informed, taking it back to the board on a work session so that we can have open dialogue, transparency within the county, whatever the issue may come up in hand, but being an active listener and treating each person, no matter who you are, with respect.
And Mark, would you respond to that question? How do you plan on communicating with the general public about issues coming before the board?
You know, very similar styles, I would hope. The best thing is to listen. We all like to talk, but sometimes just listening and finding out the common, things you have in common and things that they're concerned about. Take the time to research, listen, go to people who know more than you, and ask them their opinion. As far as a personal note, my house, my door, my phone, my email, text if you want, are open to dialogue. I don't want to make anyone feel like a problem or question or anything that's not important enough to talk to their county commissioner. And then, of course, get the facts, do your research, take it to the board, and, you know, have an open dialogue, like you said, be open and honest, make sure that people understand what you're talking about and how you, hopefully, to resolve those issues.
Thank you. Would you believe we've gotten down to the last two questions, but I have just one last quick question that, we'll give each of you thirty seconds to respond to, okay? So, Mark, what do you see Hubbard County looking like in ten years?
Hubbard County looking like, well, when elected, some of the things I've talked about before, we'll certainly have an aging population, but well, taking care of aging population, not that it's, they're the ones paying the tax, helping to pay taxes and deserve the very best. I also do want to see a younger, more youthful group here, supporting our area and our taxes, and committed to their schools, their children, their families, and continue to bring Hubbard County to where I loved it and I've enjoyed it for all these years.
Okay, Dan, thirty seconds. How do you see Hubbard County looking in ten years?
I think you can see it right now, and you can look at the law enforcement aspect of it. You know, I've been involved in law enforcement since the age of fifteen. I've seen squad cars run around with ball tires. Cory's done a great job of making sure that the funding is there, the officers are supplied with the stuff that they need. Also, the government center, we remodeled that because of energy costs and things of that. We looked at customer service transparency and look at Heritage Living Center, invested fourteen point one million in that, so you can see it. You open up your eyes and look.
Thank you very much. We're to the end of the questions. Now we're going to have closing comments from both of our candidates. They have two minutes each, and we will again start with Dan.
You know, there were some things that I wasn't real keen on Mark's responses, you know, a couple of them such as the Fox Blossom. You know, the managers, managers from every department head were involved in that process. They were able to look at it, disseminate the information amongst their employees. I have another issue with the AIS. Ten years the program's been here, I mean, we are the leader in Hubbard County. There is no one any better than what we're doing right now. We're looking at a rapid response team, we've worked with DNR, done a great job in that. It's very important. The other issue that I'd like to bring up, you know, the public health. You know, we contract out through St. Joe's, they're doing a fine job to keeping our community safe, our kids safe, making sure if there's an epidemic, what's the protocols, what are we going to do? The last part of that, and part of my two-minute little spiel that I wasn't able to finish, was that I serve in following committees. I'm in Hubbard and Prevention, Northwest Juno Training Center, Solid Waste, Prime Health Towards Zero Death, Hubbard County Extension, Indian Affairs, Health and Human Services. I also served as chairman. You know, I'm running for reelection to continue serving the residents of Hubbard County and all those who choose to live here. And if you look in District Four, look in the northern part, you'll see a lot of homes that are being built.
Thank you. Mark, two minutes for your closing statement.
Okay, well, we'll just tackle the AIS one more time. I believe we are doing a good, a good, a good job, but I wish there's more we can do. And one of the concerns I've heard over the last few months is that really, although the volunteers are there and the county's paying for people to do it, there's still a lot of, I don't know, open areas. My suggestion would be if we can get some more funding, is to have more of these stations like the one I have at the Hubbard County Sanitation Area to decontaminate. Ask that maybe do one in the port area, one obviously in Akeley, Nevis, Lake George, and I know that takes money and funding, but I'm sure the lake owners would be more than willing to help with that process. And do that. What I hear other people complain about is, I'll give you an idea of Benedict Lake, for some reason, the survey count's way up on that one, people dumping bullets. Part of it suggested to me that Leech Lake was doing a real hard job on inspections of accesses, so people were kind of bypassing, going through Lake Benedict through, into Leech Lake from there. So we have to be really proactive and listen to people, make sure we got people there, continue to do a good job of doing a fight back and make sure we're doing that well. And also believe in growing our local economy. We need businesses to create a climate that supports their expansion, economic growth in Hubbard County. Thriving businesses will offer better paying jobs, which will help turn people, to raise people out of poverty, help our tax rates, and make it a better place for our families to live and grow and enjoy our great county.
Well, with that, we can say thank you very much for being here and sharing your thoughts about being a county commissioner. And now we can make the noise of clapping. We are an example of the way things should be done, so thank you so much. There is coffees and treats back on the table, and gentlemen, can you stay and visit with people as they have questions, please? Please feel free to engage them a little more. We did all but two of the questions that were turned in. Thank you very much.